So we're in discussion items, and first item, I had a, a request, and did I distribute this?
I.
If you remember, I think I made a copy, and which was, uh, this is the MOU.
I saw something over there.
The Army?
Yeah. So probably about a month ago, I got a gentleman call from the Army, and due to recent actions, they have to report back to their office, but if they live beyond fifty miles from their duty station, then they're required to be in an office somewhere. And so, in speaking with this individual, I suggested we put together an MOU, so we would know what we're looking at, um, which I distributed that. And then, also, the individual that would be working remotely, if we, if we agree to this, uh, there's a room over in the NX that the OEM's not using, that would be sufficient for this individual. And they just basically need a desk and a chair and a, a space to work. And so that's what the, that's what the request is. I haven't had any of this vetted through legal, through any, um, you know, it seems re- rather innocuous, but, uh...
Same process would be like seeing?
Uh, it would be.
A remote location?
A, a remote location, um, don't know for what length of time. Um, this individual lives about, probably thirty miles from here. I've suggested a closer location, uh, that they may pursue. Um, but it's incumbent upon the, the Army to find a place for this gentleman to, uh, to work. And so... I'm presenting it for discussion, and then, um, if there's questions you have, I can take them back to the, to my contact, this, uh, this Mr. Claire, and, um, let him address any concerns that we might have.
Are they gonna outfit this office and stuff, or do we have to?
No, no, we don't, we don't. The only thing I seen in there, Joe, that was any concern to me, and I think it'd be minimal, was the, uh, access to, uh, to a printer, I think someone in there read that. But, um, I mean, the utilities are on there.
Yeah.
It's been explained that there are normal business hours that we conduct. Uh, there are days that we might be, um, observing a holiday, that the space wouldn't be available.
So is this something to go through legal before we take that action?
Oh, you know, I would have.
It's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry for the most part. Uh, that was my only deal there, that, that I thought was a little bit big, is if we had to outfit an office, but it seemed pretty, pretty well there for me, even I had known.
The gentleman brings in his own computer, um, uh, there's a, there's a desk. He was even willing to work back there in the general meeting room, off of one of the eight-foot tables and a chair there. Uh, but he was, uh, he was, uh, he, there was an office there that OEM suggested that he might want to use, to give him a little more privacy, but he was willing to set at a table and, and do his work, so...
And is this something we're gonna be doing pro bono?
Yes, yes, yeah. And, and, and I, and I think to that, Eric, this would be, in, in my, in my opinion, uh, this is supporting our military, and there's no cost involved to us.
Except for paper out of the printer?
Possibly, but, you know, is that something this gentleman put in here that didn't need to be? Is this boilerplate, is this, is this unique to this location? That was the only thing that I thought about, and I'm sure, I say I'm sure, if he needed to bring a remo paper, I bet the military would supply it, so... And, uh...
So I'm guessing this individual's been working from home, he's been told to come in, he can't do that anymore?
It's my understanding.
And this is their fix for that?
It's my understanding, yes. And, and again, I have suggested something that would require less travel time for this individual. Um, but nothing's has, uh, has came about there yet.
And Randy has been made aware of this, he knows where this person would be?
Randy was part of that, um, that tour that we took over there, yeah. He's the one that recommended this one room, yeah.
Good.
Okay. Any, any questions I need to take back to this individual? I don't believe so, it was pretty, pretty decent there, I think.
I've got one more question.
Sure.
If we decide to do this, um, we would be, for better or worse, stuck for a year at a time?
No, I don't, I don't think so. It, it can be terminated, uh, in writing, and if we needed to put, like, it could be terminated, uh, you know, with thirty days or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think this is a permanent, uh, offer. This is, this is probably for the length of this, the time this individual, uh, either is, remains in service or until he's re, he or she is relocated, yeah, yeah. And it, and it wouldn't have to be that off, it wouldn't have to be that spaced over there, you know? Okay, right, I'll have, uh, we will take a look at it and see if there's anything that we might miss. The second thing I had then was the surplus equipment, we discussed the grader, and then we also have the one, um, the one truck that I guess is kinda down right now, and, uh...
Truck fourteen?
I believe it is, Joe, yeah.
Is that the old black truck?
Yes.
The one sitting outside?
Of course, you can, we'll be docked all the fuel off of that. There's twelve hundred, there's another twelve hundred, six hundred, there's three grand. There's another grand, there's four grand. So you can take about four grand off of those repairs if it's fine.
Well, I mean, if you're doing that, I mean, your tires and stuff can come off too, because no matter what you got, you gonna have tires, you gonna have fuel, you gonna have tires. You gonna have oil changes, so... We, uh, Blue Black's done a pretty good job over the years.
So a lot of that's, uh, that's fuel, um... But I, but I put those two items on there as it relates to, uh, relocate, um, downsizing the warehouse, uh, the surplus equipment. So the other two items I was gonna mention was the two trailers out back. We've not taken any action on those, so as either individually or part of, uh, part of a bigger discussion, uh, I, I think it's time we took some action to get these things either repaired or, uh, moved, uh, declare them as surplus and put them out for bid, and that includes those two trailers we have out back there. And I don't know if there's anything else left down at the warehouse that we need to, um, uh, equipment-wise. But I just think it's time to, you know, it's, uh, we're knocking on the door, may, and we want to get that, uh...
Downsized.
Downsized, and, and, uh, so...
Me too, uh, yeah. I can reach back out again, uh, to DS movers, uh, everything, go from there, and you go back over and see what is still there, what is not. You know, because like I said, it seemed like there was some, we would have things, and, and I had actually taken pictures, and some things have vanished. Went to other departments and decided now we need them here, we need them there, so...
All right, so specifically then, uh, you will continue the, to pursue that, and then, and then let's, let's talk about the two trailers out back.
What about for bids?
Okay, what about the, uh, what about the grader?
The grader, I still like to have more discussion on that grader. I'm not, I'm not completely ready to let go about just yet.
Okay.
I've done a little more research and stuff, established with other individuals. I'm leaning toward that, I've got, just done a little bit of notes here, I'm waiting for the actual paperwork to come in, I'll support with another gentleman, uh, you know, they're, they're forty-two something, forty-three thousand dollars to fix it. Uh, I think you said that you had a, a deal there on this. I haven't done the math on any of these, I just made a few marks here, uh, forty-one, seven or so, something around about that amount, I think you had. Uh, I've got another bid that's coming in, the highest cost of repairs, for around thirty-five thousand dollars. Also, I certify.
Okay, with, with a warranty?
Uh, with him stating there and everything, warranty on, sort of stuff of that, but he needs to actually see the machine. He needs to actually do his own, uh...
Diagnose.
Yeah, on it. Now, he also said that would be at the highest cost. He also told me that it could just be a module, check valves, some other stuff in there, you know? Uh, and this, this is coming from a gentleman that used to work at CAT, he knows this grader.
Okay.
But he still wants to run his own diagnostics.
Okay.
Because he wasn't included on that part of it at this time.
Is there a fee involved in that?
Uh, the only thing that that would be, and I, I've gotta get down with him, see if I can get him to come here and run his diagnostics, and what we'd be looking at, or what? Because he said until we get it to his shop, is what he'd said, but I'm trying to get him to come here, and everything. So I've still gotta have that discussion with him. And then actually, he's supposed to send me over the printed on, if he has to do everything there, so... He's around eight thousand dollars cheaper, you know, there, and possibly even be a lot cheaper.
Would he, uh, state the warranty?
I'm sure.
Whatever that, yeah, that, that would be important to me, and, and I guess, Joe, as I, as I look at this and look at the history, the usage of it, um, your, your cost per hour is one thing that I look at. It sets a great deal of time, and with the amount of hours that we typically use it, it just, to me, seems like, um, uh, I guess it's nice to have around if you can afford it, but if you're not using a piece of equipment, then, um, that's, that's kinda my, my approach on. So what's the, what's the intended use of it? Uh, uh, we don't have a tenth grader operator, so what would, what would, what would we do with it if we got it fixed?
Yeah, well, it's time, you know, uh, what it seems, since I've been here, we've had a pretty good need for another grader.
Okay.
And, and, and my time here.
True, true.
And everything.
Okay.
And from what I've seen over the last year of setting back there those other seats in here and stuff, that there's also been a time that it could have been used quite often. It's kinda like having a CAT loader. How often do we use it? Where's it located at right now? What's it doing? How's it benefiting us? How's it paying for itself? It, there again, if you're gonna go back on, it's nice to have a piece of equipment, it's nice to have full drive, but how often do you use it? It's not always how often, it's when, that makes the difference. So... Yeah. So I'm just, I'm just going off of what knowledge I have at this time, and the deal there. Like I said, I'm ready, put the old black truck out, it's been around for a long time, it's had a lot of that in there. Uh, I've looked on, uh, other auction sites, not Purple Wave, I've looked on Sexton's, Auctioneers, I've looked on several others, uh, where I've seen some motor graders. And with what Ryan English telling, I think what they're giving is what they will pay. Uh, because there's others out there that are bringing more money in that timeframe with higher hours than that.
Repaired or in the current condition?
Running, up and going.
Yeah.
Ready to go. There, there, I've seen, I actually talked to my brother-in-law, Nemo Williams, in Excavating Business and Stuff over in Dallas County, and told him what that grader was, and he said there's no reason why that thing shouldn't range a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty, out on the open margin, with it going, that way that it sits. He was saying forty-five to fifty-five, is what he was saying, somebody had prepared, well, my brother-in-law was saying, so... So, yeah. So I'm still...
You want to say all these graders, approximately?
All these by?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the one I thought was around a hundred and thirty, but now I'm wrong, I think he was saying something different. I don't know what you had in mind, but...
I, I think the most recent ones are a hundred and thirty. I think that last one was signed, if I remember right, it was a hundred and thirty. We could get Mike to pull the, uh, sales room, but I think it was a hundred and thirty. But I think some of the earlier ones were a hundred and sixty.
That's what I was remembering.
Yeah, I think you're right on that, yeah.
So that may be where you, what I had in mind, difference of what he was saying to him.
Any idea on the value of these units out here? Um, and we'll put a reserve on them, and I'll get Mike to start to get those out for, for bid.
Right, yeah, I, I did not actually go ahead and follow through, I was gonna try to, especially on that Camper trailer, the Sheriff's Department trailer, uh, to see there, uh, whatever, because I even got it funded to make sure of the title, uh, and then I was actually gonna get a picture of that title and then run that to see what kind of value that is, so I need to finish that out today as well.
Okay.
Uh, the other, you know, what I call a concessions trailer, or a canteen, whatever that other one is, you know, I, I have no idea.
Just put it out by size and year and...
Yep, I say we can put it out there and let it do what it's gonna do.
With a reserve?
Well, with a reserve or without a reserve, I mean, I, you know, you wanna hand sell it? Go from there, or what are you gonna put a reserve? How are you gonna, what are you gonna do if it don't need the reserve? Put it out again?
I'm, I'm asking questions, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if, and if it didn't, then, uh, do we want to just put it out at a, can, can we put it out at the base value? Or do we have to pay?
Yeah, that's...
Where to take bids on it?
We have to take bids on it.
Where to take bids on, okay.
Deal bids, but you can set a start point, yeah.
That's what we thought we'd said before.
Okay.
Everything, so, yeah. Because I don't know, I mean, it'd just be going value, I don't know what we'd get on that, maybe taking it as, setting it up, trying to compare it to, like you said, size and stuff, compared to concession stand trailer, you know, Cook Shack style type deal.
Jill might be able to help you with that too.
Okay.
I mean, just because she runs that kinda stuff on the ground too.
Concess, yeah.
Red table versus white table.
You bet. Okay.
So, Joe, you'll have us some information on the grader next week, you think?
I hope so.
Okay. All right. Public comments items listed on the agenda? None? Uh, ru- routine business?
You mentioned that KCI might be interested in that pile of rubble at Drydaw?
Yeah, I do remember you saying something about needing some type of fill material, or it's a grader gap than what they thought.
For Atlanta, for it, yeah.
What's the, uh, the tiers on grader operators?
Yeah, I could be, oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not gonna move that, especially now. Was it this hall?
Yeah, I think, unless you've got it there too.
I guess that's in the other book, maybe?
You may have it on there too, but it wasn't...
I was gonna say, I thought I looked for that in that, but I think I think it's in our budget.
Could be.
Thing is worth.
The little one. Yeah, it probably was in your budget's cap too, if we were just discussing.
What I've seen, yeah. That's twenty-four minutes, gotta take over here. Stayed in there with the, I guess, the benefit.
Well, it's, it's last, I just was, what it, what it, what it looked like there.
I think that's how it went, too. Pretty soon, she's just bombing that thing. Can't even tell who that is. No. No, he got, he got hauled and then brought back, and hauled back. He got the tribal fish to let the shop, you know what I mean?
Any questions regarding the warrants?
No, sir. Not on me.
No.
If you want to just thank his staff.
Yeah.
Okay. It's 'cause you're gonna stack them up anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe. Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, you bet, so we're gonna feel that out here. Yeah, we don't say, we gotta do that, but it makes sense. Taking that chance, we'll just do it if we're there. Just get all that at once. Okay. That's around the corner, yeah. Okay, we might work it in here and there. Okay, you know, someone get back and look at this. I think, bye. Yeah, we want to do that, yes, sir, I agree. Thank you, John, thank you. Sorry about that, thanks. John Beer did an update on the Roger Road. A lot of debris up creek still piled up. Trying to make a plan on removing it, burning it somehow or another, given it. Of course, not many previous problems right to the bridge.
About the bridge?
About the bridge. So it's not something we can actually just burn in spot without having to move it, so we're just gonna move it down below. What we'll do, we go from there. We've got phone lines on one side, electric lines on the other. So we're kinda hobbled on that deal.
Piled up against it right now?
It's not up against it, we've got three piles of wet sets, I sure took pictures the other day and I didn't, but we've got three piles up above the creek, above the bridge, hanging off coming in from the side. So up above there, it is three big, tremendous, pretty good piles, I'd like to just burn, but like I said, I had John wait and look and look where they're at, what we're gonna have to move them to burn, so we might as well just move them on down. Just let the nature take its course from there.
Whispering downstream there.
Let's see, that would be Jewel, so from there on, depending on how it goes, you know, or we'll. It'd catch up, just run on through.
Yeah, it'd be good enough.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay, let's go back and talk about Mr. Morrell's request.
I'm not a hundred percent myself on how all that really works there, and I don't know. We start doing that with her office and everything, how's that going to, to go for everybody else? That wants to do some of the same. Does that open something up, or is that, I mean, how is that, how does that work?
The auditors don't describe it favorably. Any funds, just as a general statement, any funds that is not managed through the financial system of the county. Any funds that are county funds are supposed to be managed through the county system. So that's the way their expectancy is. What happened was, is there was a canine, and there was signed for the Sheriff's Department that became available, and became available to be tax deductible. And so that went off, was allowed by the commission. We can't tax deduct, give somebody a tax deductible break if that's the case for, for us, anything. Because we're not a four oh one C, whatever the codes are to qualify to be able to do that, we can't do that. So that was how it originated through Luminary Foundation, that they were able to provide a means of support plus a tax deduction for a targeted situation, for a targeted point of an allowance. That's how it started. And still exists currently to date, that still exists for that to date. As I understand, there is some consideration on whether or not that will continue, but that's to be seen.
Okay, so if that means it, it seemed like that Mr. Morrell may have some people willing to donate, contribute, do something, but with the way he's presenting it, it sounds like they're willing to do that if they can have a tax write-off. Is that, that's where everybody else is taking, yeah, is it targeted to a specific item, or is it targeted to him from here on, for whatever? You know, I think that would be things that we would need to have further discussion on, maybe with Mr. Morrell, or maybe even some of those individuals to make sure. Because that's, that's gonna put us at a liability.
It does.
Correct?
It does.
So I would think that, yeah, I would think.
Is that a no, or is that will get back to you?
I think that's a get back to, because I think, I think we need more information.
I will call Mr. Morrell and just let him know it will get back to him. So what, what is it, Joe, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna know from him?
I wanna know if, if his is, like, when is it targeted for specific?
One item.
Mm-hmm. Are these people only willing to donate if they can get a tax deduction? I mean, I don't know what he's really after for sure. I mean, it's hard for me to read for sure where we're at, what he's after.
Okay.
So is it for the one items, is it for, what's he actually after then? What are they actually willing to do for? You know, can a person meet with those people?
The process would be what you're saying, as if we followed the procedure from before. What are you after? It goes for that one thing, that targeted thing, and then as a commission, do you approve for that to happen? So I think what you're saying is what's the target that we're shooting for.
Mm-hmm.
And then you all would approve whether or not that target is something you're liability of.
Right. Yeah, and in the past, when you did that for the Sheriff's Department, who said, "Kane, I don't believe what you said there", did the commission meet with the donor of that?
No.
Okay.
No.
But did they, did they know who that was coming from?
No. Well, you probably could have.
Sometimes they wanna be anonymous.
And I get that, and that's.
You probably could have.
Yeah, and that may be what we get told, I don't know, I just, I just feel there's a little bit of variables there with the unknowns that.
It wasn't.
Makes me skeptical to be completely open.
Yeah, so I, I will just be on record, I'm gonna take a narrow, very narrow approach on this. The, the process, as I understand it, flows through the commission, and we carry the ultimate responsibility for, for budget. Once we open this up beyond where it's at, we've had other offices, other departments that would like to do the same thing, and they've been turned, they've been turned down. So then it sounds like any specific request, and it's up to us to determine whether that's worthy or not. I would prefer to think that through the budget process, we have the numbers that we know we have available to, to, to work with for the departments that we're responsible for. And if those are legitimate requests at budget time, then those should be discussed and honored if possible. I know, I have seen budget requests in excess of one point seven million dollars from a certain office holder. And so I know that anything, any request is, is possible, but when we evaluated that, there were just some requests that we're unable to honor. So I will be on record that I'm gonna take a nar, very narrow approach to this and believe that we should not open that, we should not open that up. But I will get back to Mr. Morrell after a meeting and ask him what specific items that he, that he believes would be funded by these donations, and are those donations available today, or are those speculative? Because.
And or have been, or in determination during that.
I wanna kind of put something there.
Sure, was that by your manager?
Yeah. I mean, I feel like that door was open. And so, not that I'm for or against it at the moment, I'm still listening. But that door was open. So if we're going to close it, I think it needs to be black and white from this day forward. That's not what happened. The door was open with the dog.
Sure. That's, that's a fair counterpoint, but oftentimes, as commissioners sit around this table, we speak in terms of black and white, but it doesn't always turn out that way. And so I think we have to be careful amongst ourselves that, that we, that we look at every issue and we say it's black and white. Most issues are not black and white. I believe that decision probably was made before this body was, was here, I believe, I might, I might be wrong. So we didn't have any input on the original concept. So now we are working with what we, what we have to work with. So if this body decides that it's not in the best interest of county budget to allow these, these sources to exist, then that's certainly a decision that, that we can, we can make. We can't, we can't go back and look at what the previous commission was thinking at that time. They, in good faith, made the decision that they did, and, and it may have served a very good purpose. Okay? But.
How long ago was that?
Eric, I've been here seven years, and I believe it existed before, possibly before I got here.
And since that time, there have been none?
No new departments.
Have been opened under the county.
Correct. Correct. Other items have been funded through that, through that, through the Sheriff's LAF source. But no new departments have been opened up.
And what comes into this under our tax saving? When you open something, it counts under our tax saving, you know? That's how come the approval pass to county from.
I would think there'd be some other things that would take effect there without being elected office versus, I know we haven't elected sheriff, but that is a department under some of that for, of those departments set under the commissions.
Well, Joe, I, I think that all contracts have to be signed in the name of the county and.
Under the commission.
Under, under the commission, and that, and that pertains to other elected officials as well, as well as what we oversee from a department head standpoint. Should we, should we adopt any other policy where, where, where not following the statutes? And I think you're starting to travel a path that, that might not lead to where you could be a good, a good outcome.
Yep. That's what I'm saying, I think it puts us at two, two levels for that, but I'm still interested in hearing his intent. If the rest is commissioned, obviously, I'm only one. So with you on your foot and his, you may not have to have any further conversation.
No, I will respectfully, I will call Mr. Morrell, as I told him I would, and I'll convey the conversation we had and, and maybe suggest that based upon that, that he give you a call. But I will call him to let him know that we discussed it further. Okay, we're, we're in, Ashley, we'll go to public comments.
None at this time.
None at this time, okay. More in roundtable.
Yeah. Like I said earlier, when Christie came in, we're getting some working stuff done there on Independence, everything. I had two graders out there working on it with water truck, got them on Kansas today. I've already had two compliments on Independence, that they think it's in a little bit better shape than it's been in a long time. So even after the Raider's been through, so that's good. So hopefully we can get something on Kansas, 'cause those are two of my biggest roads that people are complaining about. Those are also the rural rock roads, so trying something a little different there, not putting the actual drum over on those and see what happens with that. Had a couple of the compliments from over on Jewel, and nodded away a little bit there after the breaks we've gotten, how quick the guys have gotten in, in shape, where it was easily enough to pass through, so I thought that was pretty good. Also have one over on Julie, we have a cemetery on Julie. I believe there, it's there, I didn't even know it was even there myself. I had those pictures pulled up earlier, and on those cemeteries and stuff, we maintain those roads once a year, twice a year, how, how does that work?
Joe, I don't remember the name of that one, but as soon as you tell me, it'll, it'll be clear as day.
I don't even have the name of it right now, I just got pictures of what the road looks like.
There's a cemetery road there that's well overgrown, the cemetery's not being maintained, if it's the same one.
And that, that may be.
And a person in the past has requested that, that be graded back in there because it's a cemetery road, but that is done out of courtesy, and the ones we do are typically maintained so that public can access those. This one's not being.
And, and that may be the case, but I did have a citizen call me about it and everything, so we did go ahead and cut the trees out, I did have the guys on fuel truck. We've got the brush cutter down, steel, actually we've got two, one's normal and our backup, they're both down. But I did have to go and remove those, cut those trees up, block them, just push them off the side at this time, until we need to have a little further look. At this time, I told them, we need to have a little further look.
Is that a gate back there?
Yes.
So, which is right there at it, so so, yeah. So, I mean, you can see that it hasn't been maintained for a while, for quite a while. So, with all the grass and everything, so that may be the one you're talking to. I don't know. I didn't even know there was even one there. So, but I do plan on, on going out, taking a look at it and seeing. But that's what I was, I just want more information on, on what is common practice.
Common, common practice has been, we will do our best to grade a cemetery road to the cemetery before memorial day, if it's, if it's.
If the cemetery is being maintained.
Yeah.
Okay. You bet. That gives me some information there to go off of.
Is that a family cemetery, or is it a?
There, Deanne Randy, I don't know the name. I just, I just want individual that has reached out. And, and I didn't know the cemetery. I don't know it like the Royal Cemetery, or the Huff, or
Lots of cemeteries in the county.
Yes.
Especially where it's been deed to own, like we're seeing.
Mm-hmm, exactly. And so that was gonna be more that we don't even know, so.
Does the county make that decision too?
Mm-hmm.
It's like, okay.
But it sounded like this one is just like the one that was on Winford's place, Beard's, on the Beard place there. This back up just above and back behind the Seacoal used to build coming off the end of
Yeah, so maybe as a part of the future discussion, it could be whether it's a family cemetery or a public cemetery. We're, I, we're, we're not under obligation to do any of those. We do so out of a courtesy to the loved ones that visit the public cemeteries. There have been family cemeteries established that are, that acquit claim deed is to the county, but there's no obligation on our part to maintain those whatsoever. And
Yep, so it's just complimentary, that was it.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure, but both the path through the woods is a rogue. Don't know what it looked like to me there.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm doing. I'm trying to, because I gotta, I'm gonna figure out the name exact and all that types of stuff, and see, because it, it could be what I was saying, like what they're saying. If it's not being taken care of and maintenance and kept up, then
There's history on one out there that, that might reveal lack of maintenance, Joe.
That may be it. So I'll, I'll reach out to this individual, and him and I both can go there together. And we can go from there.
Take, take a look at it.
You bet. So. Other than what we talked about there with Fady being here, also on those, so which is something we need to get done, so.
So how much are we supposed to get this weekend?
How much this week?
This weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Are we ready for the next heat?
Are we ready? Let him go to the other side of the county.
It did look a little rarer on that, on the east side of the county, Joe.
This time around? Yeah. They had the winds and devastation we didn't get, so I'll take a little bit of the rain into washouts. You bet. So still one county. So.
Eric, give anything for roundtable? We've, okay, we've had four applications that have been submitted for a bridge form. I do not want to discuss these in open session.
No.
So I would entertain, I'm sorry.
I'll do one thing, just real quick, so I can, so I went back on the most recent sales tax that we got and looked at our trend since 21, and so far in 25, we are sitting in between 22 and 23. That's where we're at for current sales tax calculation, is 22 and 21. And, you know, that's, that's where we're at. Just analogy.
Right. And I'm sure you, that's, that's not one you'd already sent to us.
Yes, that's one you guys have.
Okay, I was gonna say, I thought that was.
I just went back and did the four months in and just looked at prior years to see where we ended up.
Four billion dollar difference for now, in it, I think, is what I
Down the bottom is where the payments are totaled out.
Yeah, and that's without fourteen thousand.
And that's general revenue, I would add, and they tend to follow the trend with that general revenue.
Right. It's not increasing, I'm sure. No extras?
No extras.
No extras? Anything else we're saying?
No comment, that's it.
Anything else for public? So motion to go into closed session, is that what you're looking forward to, discuss?
I will entertain a motion to enter a closed session for personnel reasons.
Motion for closed session for personnel reasons?
I'll second it.
Okay, our motion is second. Need for a discussion? See, no, I need to roll call, load.
Joe?
Yes.
Eric?
Aye.
Randy?
Yes. We are now in